To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Bowman.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Brzaska.
Here.
We're all here tonight. Thank you all for coming. Move into public participation. The first one is a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and we'd like to invite Erica Lopez to present.
First, thank you for allowing the Police Social Work Division the time to help shine light on this important community issue. As a Montgomery Police Department social worker, it is my duty to encourage open conversations and communication, provide support when needed, and to make sure that people know that they are not alone and there is always someone willing to listen. This is essential to both our residents, community stakeholders, and our own internal staff and police officers. We will continue to advocate for those that for whatever reason cannot advocate for themselves and provide that linkage to the resources that are needed. The constant referrals that we receive for mental health issues and for people experiencing suicidal ideation tells us that more needs to be done. I want to personally thank the board for having the vision and foresight to see the vital importance of having a social worker on staff. I am in the community providing essential resources to many, and suicide prevention and mental health is only a small portion of the caseload. As a community, we can get the word out and encourage people to know the warning signs and to remind individuals not to be scared to ask the tough questions. We would like to highlight three essential resources this evening. The first one being 988. You can dial 988 if you are in crisis or experiencing a mental health-related issue. 988 provides free 24/7 confidential support. You can call, text, or chat online. Second, you may remember last year, the village presented each of you with a branded suicide prevention card. We continue to have these available and in the lobbies of our facilities. We also brought more here tonight. Finally, you may notice, this month, suicide awareness pins are being worn by officers and staff at the Montgomery Police Department. We will wear these for the month of September to assist in raising awareness. And at this time, we'd like to provide some to the board as well. My assistant is gonna pass those out. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, you want me to read this? She stole the show, by the way.
Yeah. She always does.
All right. All right, so I'll read the proclamation and then entertain a motion for approval. It's National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September of 2024. Whereas September is recognized as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to promote awareness surrounding suicide prevention resources. The simple goal is to start the conversation, de-stigmatize it, and help connect people with the appropriate support services. Whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. Whereas the Village of Montgomery is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. Now therefore, as village president of the Village of Montgomery, I do hereby designate the month of September of 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I urge all residents to take the time to understand mental health through education and recognize the need to take care of one another, and that a simple phone call or message can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know why everyone's whispering.
So when you're sitting in bed tonight replaying this meeting, just think to yourself, and not even to be funny on this, but this month, talk about it, talk about it, talk about it. If there's a friend or a family member that you haven't spoken to, reach out, talk to them. All right, the next item for public comment is, well, for public participation is public comment. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the board on any topic tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Read the items on consent and entertain a motion for approval. I would like to remove item E, the water production report for August of '24, from consent tonight, and we'll add that to a future meeting. There's just a typographical error in there. Item A is minutes of the August 26 Village Board meeting, B, executive session minutes for August of 26, C, accounts payable and summary report through September 9, D, the accounts receivable report for August of '24, and F, the community development monthly report for August of '24. So moved. Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
And that carries six to zero. Thank you. All right, item A for separate action is ordinance 2090 authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed $8 million in general obligation bonds. This is waiver first and pass down the second. Director Mooski.
Thank you, President Brawley. So today was an exciting day, and I'm gonna talk about A and B together right now. So we sold our series to 2024A and 2024B bonds this morning. So at the dais, I placed some information on what those bonds came in at. But I also have Anthony here from Spear Financial and Kent, our bond counsel from Chapman and Cutler, that's gonna give us some general information about the bonds that were sold today.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it. So yes, exciting day. We had our competitive sale for both series of bonds today. Just a reminder, the series 2024A bonds were related to the Orchard Road TIF districts and the improvements therein, so they provided $7,250,000 for capital improvements within that TIF district. So with the competitive open auction that we had this morning for the 24A bonds, we received a total of 28 bids from five different bidders. The winning bid came from the underwriter Robert W. Baird, and that bid was at a 3.1698%, roughly 3.17%. So it's actually well below expectations. We've seen rates continually come down, you know, as we started this planning process, and we're very happy to see where that rate came in today. Those bids ranged from those five bidders to that low bid of about 3.17% to a high of 3.34% roughly, so a fairly tight range between the five bids. After the sale, we revised the numbers to accomplish the $7,250,000 in proceeds and revised the par to $6,935,000. So after premium and then payment of costs, the village will net the $7,250,000 for projects within that, within the TIF district. Final rate is a 3.1642% after the resizing. Any questions on the As before I start talking about the 2024B bonds?
How does that relate to what your expectation was?
I ran the numbers last week thinking about 3.4%. So we've seen continual improvement in actually the original bids. So we run an open competitive auction process. The underwriters can bid and then rebid to improve their bids. The original bids that came in were right around expectations, and then they continued to bid and bring it down well below. So we're happy to see the results today on that.
Awesome. Any other questions on the first part?
Anthony, are those sealed bids, or can other people see what's being bid?
They can see what rank they're in, and that is all. So they don't know by how much or who else is bidding or how many people are bidding. They only know what rank they're in after they submit, and then can resubmit within a bidding window, 15 minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. It's the eBay of the bond world.
It's fun to watch, I bet.
Yeah. We hope it is.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I guess it could be boring, and that's not good.
We don't want it to be a letdown. I'll put it that way.
Okay. All right, anything else on the first part? All right.
Okay, so we also, after the 2024A bonds, we had the competitive sale for the general obligation refunding bond series to 2024B. And as a reminder, this was a refinancing of the 2013 bonds, which we had talked about. We are refinancing the 13 bonds, which are currently have a, carry a pledge of water revenues. We're refinancing them with a pledge of sales and utility tax revenues for the main purpose of getting them off of the water system pledge so that we can free up those revenues for the future borrowings where we're adding income tax to the, sorry, excuse me, to the water pledge. So we had talked about that as the goal. Savings was kind of a benefit, but we knew that depending on rates, we weren't sure where that was gonna come in. So ultimately, we sold the bonds via, again, competitive auction this morning. So with this issue, it was a little bit smaller, so we didn't see the same demand that we saw in the first issue. We received six bids from two bidders. It was actually the same underwriter, Robert W. Baird and Company, that came to win this issue as well. The rate was a 3.5857%. The two bidders ranged from that low bid of 3.58 to a high of 3.79%. This, in terms, this was a little bit of a longer issue, a few years longer than the A bonds, so rates were a little bit higher. It was also a little bit smaller. This came within the expectations, I would say. When I ran these numbers last week, we had run it at about a 3.56%, so we were within a few basis points of kind of where we thought it was gonna come in at. Overall, though, after the refunding, this will result in savings to the village. So not only will accomplish the goal of refunding the 13 bonds with the new pledge, but will result in savings to the village of $66,590 in total debt service. On a present value basis, that's $63,956 over the life of the bonds, or 2.09% savings. So we still were able to, you know, execute this current refunding at above 2% savings while accomplishing the goal of taking it off the pledge, which was, you know, the main focus.
Yep.
I'll just mention quickly that, you know, as part of this process, this was one we've been working on for some time. We actually started this last year and then paused with some delays with market on the 2024B bonds. If we had done it last year, we would not have produced any savings. And then we also had project delays in the 24A bonds, so. But through this process, we have to, there's a lot of steps, including completing an official statement and going to the rating agency. I would say that the S&amp;P did affirm the village's AA rating with stable outlooks. We've continued to have a very strong bond rating. Jennifer and her team did a fantastic job on that bond rating call, expressing all of the strengths of the village. If you read that rating report, which is attached as part of the award packet that should be in your board packets, you'll see a good summary of the village's financial position, including robust long-term financial and capital planning. They're looking at, you know, the plans that you all put together, and it's an important part of the rating process. Very strong reserves, liquidity and liquidity of the village, and consistently strong operating results. So all important factors in the AA rating, which lead to the interest rates that we were able to achieve today. Anything from the legal end?
No, unless anybody has any questions on the other two ordinances before you. Questions?
I missed or did not hear, you gave us the savings on the 2024B. What was our ultimate savings on the 2024A series?
2024A was not a refinancing. That was all for new money, so there was not a savings component.
Cool. I do have a question. It's probably for staff. Mine's reading through this. I'm looking at the, it's item 6A. In the packet, it talks about account excesses. It says any amounts to the credit of the accounts of the Orchard Road Special Tax Allocation Fund in excess of the then-current requirements therefore may be transferred at any time by the village treasurer to such other account or accounts respectively of the Orchard Road Special Tax Allocation Fund as it may in his or her sole discretion designate. So what does that actually mean? So if there's monies left over from this bond issue for the items that we're funding, they can just move that money right over to some other item without board approval, or?
I can speak to that. So the bond proceeds, the bonds are being issued on a tax exempt basis, so we need to make sure that the bonds are used for good capital projects that are approved by the IRS. They also, these bond proceeds can only be used for projects within the TIF district. So what that's saying is, if we, we've got these projects that you've all approved, and if we get to the end of those projects and we didn't spend all the bond proceeds for whatever reason, maybe the bids came in lower, that allows you to allocate that money for other TIF-eligible projects, but it has to stay within the TIF. So that's what that's saying. It's actually more of a limitation as to how you can use the excess money.
Okay, and then it would just come back to the board for approval of what projects to use that on?
That's right.
So in this bond issue, specifically, what projects are in this bond issue?
Storm sewer project and the basins and Mulberry Road.
Mulberry Road, okay. There's nothing, just, and how about Ockert Road, the widening of Ockert Road or anything? Okay.
Nope, it's just, I mean, anything, I guess, has to be done at Ockert.
With the regional base in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions? Is there a motion? So moved. Go ahead, call the roll. Thanks, guys.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes, sorry, before we vote, this is on item A.
Item A. Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Is the board on motion on B? So moved. Move in a second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
That carries six zero. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it. All right, the next item is C, ordinance 2092 authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 2.6 million in general obligation bonds. This is the first reading. Director Mooski.
So item C is in regards to refunding our 2017 general obligation bonds, which are also related to the water fund. This is part of, again, one of the restructuring of the debt for water. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know we've spoken about this previously. If there are any questions, I can take them now. And again, we have Anthony and Kent here to speak to the matter as well.
Awesome. That's why they didn't leave when I said, "Thank you."
They did drive all the way up from Springfield, so. So they're driving right back down after this meeting.
Wow. All right, any questions? When will this take place, the sale?
So this is the first reading. We have the passage on the next reading, so the 23rd, and then from there, we'll have all of those public hearings and items, and then we hope to issue these in January sometimes.
Okay. Awesome. And if I'm reading this correct, this is projected to actually not save us money, but this one's gonna end up costing us a little bit of money.
Perhaps. We're hopeful that the markets will be in our favor, so.
All right, thank you. Thanks, guys. All right, item D tonight is a word of contract to NCAP in the amount of $59,505.19 for the Parkview Basin native planting and maintenance. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So the village owns and maintains a detention basin that serves the Parkview and Marbury Manor subdivisions. The board has approved projects in the past for this detention basin related to maintenance, in which we have done some regrading to help with the amount of water being retained in the basin at one time. Through that process, so Public Works still fights with difficulty with maintaining the basin in certain areas that are defined in this contract, where the slopes are steeper than we can maintain with our traditional mowing equipment. So therefore, we developed a plan to transform these areas into nationalized basins, which makes them long-term more sustainable as far as maintenance goes for the village moving forward. So we did put out an RFP, received multiple bids. NCAP was the lowest bidder and most responsible bidder, and so staff is recommending approval of this project to move forward. If there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them.
Have we done business with NCAP?
We have not done any projects with NCAP, but they have done projects within the village for other developments in the past.
Did this with NCAP before? And I can tell you that NCAP is one of the best native contractors around.
I'm excited to be working with them. So moved.
Second.
Second. Any other discussions? When are you planning on doing this work?
Immediately. So we're hoping to get executing on killing off the existing vegetation and then hopefully get the plugs put in before, in the prime planting season here in the fall.
Cool. All right. If there's no other discussion, go ahead, call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
That carries six oh. Thank you. All right, item E tonight is word of a contract to J&amp;S Construction in the amount of $35,500 for the Public Works off-site grading. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So through the construction of the new Public Works facility, it took place in 2023. There were materials that were excavated out of the detention area that's located just east of the creek. That divides the parcel that the building is on, as well as the detention basin. Some of those materials through the excavation weren't suitable for the building pad, which is the primary reason that we excavated the material out of there, also to serve for detention. But so those materials were not included as part of the contract with the excavation portion, so they were placed north of the pond on that site that the village owns. So staff looked at multiple options here as far as paying extras for removal to have that material haul the way to a CCDD facility, but found that this was the most advantageous for the village to be placed down north of the pond site. And then, so this contract basically will be balancing the site. So we'll be moving around that overburdened material. On top of that, there are two stockpiles of primarily black dirt, topsoil there, so those will be respread over the top, and then we'll be moving forward with some planting of some minimal maintenance or low-mow fescue that'll be planted in that area, as well as some new trees to establish that area back to somewhat of a forested area for the village. The reason for that is that there's no access other than the maintenance access that was put in across the creek, so it's very unlikely that that site will be used in the future for any type of building or structure. Not ruling that it can't be, but long-term, as of right now, that's not the goal of the village, so that's why we're proposing this contract approval tonight. If there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. Does this include the plantings, then?
It does not. So in the cover sheet, there's a breakdown of all the additional costs. If you look at the total budget.
It's on the second page.
Yep, they're all broken down there for you. I know that's been a question before the board, so tried to break that out for you.
Perfect. Okay, and staff is approving the additional items? So this is for just the grading?
Correct.
And then staff can approve the other three?
Correct.
Cool. Motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
That carries six oh. Thanks. All right, item F tonight is Resolution 2024-039 authorizing the sale of certain real property at 218 South River Street. Director Wolf, or I wrote down your name too many times. Go ahead.
All right, as you may recall, the village received a demolition order from a King County Circuit Court for the property at 218 South River. We did go out to bid, and the property, the house on the property has been demolished. The board approved the acquisition of the property back in June, and since then, we have recorded the deed. Now we can move forward with what we need to do in order to sell the property to recoup our costs related to the demolition order. So what you have before you is the first step in that, and that's the resolution authorizing the sale of certain vacant property. We also had to obtain an appraisal for this, so we will need to publish the resolution once it's adopted in the paper and have that appraisal available for inspection. But this authorized staff to work on getting a contract put together for this and finding somebody to purchase it. Ultimately, this will come back before the board with whoever the purchaser is.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
That carries six oh. Thank you. All right, item G, recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission of PZC 2024-009, amendment to a special use for the Montgomery Business Center planned unit development. Director App.
Yes. So the property in question is generally the area they're located where United Sugar is and Nexo is. So that's the Montgomery Business Center planned unit development. Back in 2021, we did approve an amendment to their planned unit development, which pertained to the reconfiguration of lots for the development, outdoor storage, and the timing of the extension for Nell Road and the related public improvements. It did specify that Nell Road and the related public improvements were to occur concurrent with the development of Lot 5 or within three years of that amendment being approved, whichever was to occur first. The petitioner has not developed Lot 5 as of yet, and our three-year mark has passed, so we cannot approve any final plan of subdivision for Lot 5 until we deal with this PUD amendment. So they do have a contract purchaser for Lot 5 who has submitted plans for our final PUD. They've also, the petitioners submitted their final engineering plans for the Nell Road improvements and related other improvements in stormwater detention, so those are under review. We had the public hearing related to the PUD amendment that would allow for Nell Road to be constructed, either with Lot 3 or Lot 5 development being the trigger for having to do that improvement. So with this request for PUD amendment, we're specifically asking for the extension to the timeframe for construction of Nell Road to allow for the development and occupancy of Lot 5 without the full extension of Nell Road. However, Nell Road must be extended across Lot 5 frontage with a minimum of binder course in place before an occupancy permit is issued, to not require a bike path, and to allow a sidewalk on only one side of Nell Road, to allow the wetland and floodplain areas with their associated landscaping to be located within stormwater easement areas rather than conservation easement areas as originally approved in the PUD, and to allow for the reduction in the total bond required for Nell Road and related improvements in the instance the TIF funds are used for Nell Road. So they've also applied for their final plan of subdivision, so that will be on the board agenda concurrent with the approval of this on your next agenda. So everything will kind of go in order similar to some of the other things we've had before you, like with Charis and things like that. So the petitioners are here to answer any questions you have. They did get a positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission with conditions. There was some concerns expressed about the bike path not being provided as part of this development. If the board has any further questions on that, the petitioners are here to be able to answer that.
Got a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
The, so all of Commerce is built at this point, right?
Correct.
And so this PUD amendment would require that Nell Road be built across the frontage of Lot 5 in order, initially. What about the rest of Nell Road?
So it says that it has to be completed in a timely manner, but if they want to make sure that they can get Lot 5 builders their occupancy as quickly as possible. So the compromise was that they would need to continue with the building, and they would, but at least we could get that occupancy to a Lot 5 once we got binder course on, if they're ready.
So is that defined timely manner?
Yes, in the ordinance, we say in a timely manner. They requested a little bit of flexibility with that, given... timing and potential that things might be slightly delayed. So, we tried to write it as loosely as we could, but still have some control over it. So, it's not something that's gonna roll over for several years. It's something we anticipate being completed within a season, maybe a little bit longer than a season, so.
Okay.
So, to clarify, so it's just gonna go across Lot 5?
No, it'll go all the way across to Commerce. So, but Lot 5 is who they have triggered right now. So, with that submittal, their goal, I believe, is to try to get their occupancies by July. And so, there is some potential that they might not be able to get the entire road built in that timeframe. But Lot 5 building might be ready for an occupancy before the entire road is built.
I'd just like to hear on the record, like, in a timely fashion, like, what is that? That's pretty great. What's in a timely fashion? Because as we see with arts.
If we're getting into 2026, Director App might be saying we're not in a timely fashion, but.
And the petitioners?
The petitioners have asked for a little bit of flexibility in that, and they understand the need to get it done. They're just, they didn't want to commit to a timeframe, not having bid it out yet and anything like that, so.
Will it be included with the engineering and bond for the current extension of Nell Road? Is there any security for the?
Yes, they'll have to post the security for the entire bond, so we will have that on file, for the entire road. So, we will have that on file.
Perfect.
What is Lot 4 going to be?
Detention.
I'm gonna vote no on this issue, and I'm gonna explain to you why I'm going to vote no. I think Lot 3 and Lot 5 can both be developed without the extension of Nell Road. You're gonna have to extend it a little bit. I've gone back and forth with staff on this. What is the estimated cost that the village is gonna have to put in from TIF funds to create this road?
I don't know if we have a.
That the last, last dollars I knew was a couple million dollars that the village is gonna have to put in to help create this road. I think it's a waste of taxpayer TIF funds, and I think it's a waste of developer funds. I think that Lot 3 and Lot 5 can be developed without it. I don't think the Nell Road extension needs to happen, and I'm going to vote no.
That would leave only one access point to Lot 5 and 3? Okay. Anything else? Questions? All right.
Yeah, let's do that.
Item G?
Yep.
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Motion to accept recommendation, planning and zoning?
This is simply that they made a recommendation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Make carry six zero. The enacting ordinance H will be on a future meeting. All right, nothing for discussion? Anything you're unfinished?
So, with the addition of the park on Venetian Way, even though it's not officially open yet, there has been an increase in pedestrian traffic going towards that park, more specifically crossing Concord at Thunder Gulch. That road necks down right there, and then winds out again. A few weeks back, there was a T-bone accident there. I didn't see the accident, but I was told that both cars were pretty much totaled. So, the residents got together and they put together a petition that almost has 50 signatures on it. And they asked me to present it tonight. They would like crosswalks and stop signs at intersection, because when the park does officially open, that is gonna be the main way that all the kids on the north side of Concord are gonna go to that park. And with the neck down, that would be a perfect place for, for crosswalks and for the four-way stop sign. I did talk to Mr. Rosolfo. I saw engineer at last Thursday at the plan meeting. I mentioned that to them. I just want to put it before the board that I've made that request on behalf of these residents. I'll give you the petition, Jeff, at the end of the meeting. And they would like to, like to see that sooner rather than later. I'm not sure when the park district's gonna officially open that park, but like I said, there's already people going to that park, even though it's not officially open.
Mark, do you know when that park is going to, because a resident reached out to me, and, yeah, people are going to that park, but the, the parking lot is still barricaded off.
Correct.
So, they're still waiting on improvements or to finalize things from their contractor from phase one? So, until those items are satisfied, they don't feel comfortable opening the parking lot. They do recognize that people are utilizing some of the amenities there, such as the pickleball and the swing sets, but they are, they are trying to pin down their contractor to get those remaining items finished before they officially open the park. There will be a phase two forthcoming. They've already been approved of that for their, I believe, their odds-like grant that they got. So, they don't have a timeline as of right now when that phase two will start, because they're based upon trying to finalize items from phase one, so.
The finalized items remaining from phase one, will they be handled within the neck, this year?
That I can't speak to. It's, it's not a village project. It's through the park district. I'm, I know that in talking to their operations people, they are definitely pushing hard for those punch list items to be completed. And the contractor has made some improvements over the last few weeks. I know that Inspector Klupe was out there, met with them as well about some issues in which they're trying to address with the contractor, so.
Do we know what the punch list items are?
I don't have a full list of the punch list items, but I can get that, share that.
What, I think, if residents are using it now, some residents may not know that it's a Fox Valley Park District park, and they may think it's village. What I, I think what the board doesn't want is this doesn't want the, to even begin to appear like a 30 in Orchard. So, they need to have punch list items done as soon as possible.
I'll report that back to the park district, thank you.
But I would encourage and support Trustee Guyer's information on that slowing of traffic on Concord. It took way, way too long for stop signs to appear on Concord, especially at Lakewood Creek Drive. And anything that could help to reduce the, the speed of traffic on Concord, I would fully support that. Anything back in that neighborhood, traffic has gotten terribly horrible.
I agree.
This is where my engineer would say that stop signs don't generally, aren't generally, you should say that. They're not used for slowing traffic. But I bet Mark's gonna say that staff will go out there and analyze the intersection to see if it qualifies for stop signs.
You are correct.
Perfect.
And I would, I would think, based on the traffic study we did at Concord and Gordon, that it probably would, because this is the main, people coming from the west, this is the main street. Even, even if you get on your navigation app, for my house, when I'm coming from the west, even if I'm on 30, it tells me to cut down Dixon over to Concord to my house. It doesn't tell me to go all the way to Gordon and then come back. So, this is the preferred route when you're coming from the west to get into that entire area. Lakewood, Lakewood Creek West, Montgomery, everything. So, I would, I would be surprised if the traffic study did not warrant the stop signs there.
Cool.
As long as we're talking about that area, do we have an update on the realignment of Dixon?
We do, we don't have anything substantial. What I can tell you is that they're still waiting for utilities to be removed from the existing ComEd poles. ComEd has installed all new poles and moved all of their equipment over. I can't speak to whether it's Comcast, MetroNet, AT&amp;T. It's definitely one of those. Still have items remaining. There were some crews out there working last week doing some boring, so I'm hopeful that that's to replace those overhead lines. Once those are moved, removed, and the poles can be completely abandoned, then the work will start taking place for the actual roadway section. But a large portion of that has been done on what, what can be done to this point, but that doesn't include the work that has to take place on Dixon and Galena for the additional turn lane, so.
Do we anticipate that realignment being done this year?
I have no anticipation, because it's not our project. It's through the Kendall County, and I haven't seen any type of updated progress report or timeline for completion on that. But I can reach out to Fran at the county and see if he's got anything.
He's, because as a reminder, this is the same contractor that did 30 in Orchard, that's doing the pavement there, is that correct, Mark?
Correct, deconstruction is the general contractor.
If they haven't started.
But the utility work is really what's holding them up. They, they have done everything they can to this point. They can't proceed any farther until those utility poles are completely abandoned and removed.
And I'm just, let's not let this turn into another 30 in Orchard.
They haven't started yet? Actual construction of the road?
They have done the section between the two, between the detention basins. They've started, a lot of the subgrade there is done. But again, they did that a few months ago, and then unfortunately, they haven't been able to progress and move forward because of the utility conflicts. So, it's really on the backs of, ComEd had their share of delays with the storms that we had in the spring that sent them back from finishing, completing all their poles and all of their equipment switch over. So, that was just finished, I want to say, like, last month. And like I said, now it's waiting on those other utilities to remove their equipment from the poles.
Got it.
And hopefully, I guess, done before the YMCA gets completed, because they're building a new YMCA in that corner. And if it doesn't, it's gonna be a mess.
I can imagine that the county is putting some emphasis on those utilities to get that stuff moved. But again, we all know how that works. It doesn't always work as well as we hope, but I'm sure that they're pushing. But I will definitely get some more information and get that to you.
Mark, I appreciate you updating us on other people's projects. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, I have a question for Director Wolf.
Go ahead.
You're on the spot tonight. So, in my, in my neighborhood in Seasons Ridge, it seems to be in the Kendall portion, because I have the county line just north of my subdivision. There, we have a lot of utility flags out, and in fact, they're going through my front yard, my next-door neighbor's front yard, across the street. We have the gas line marked, and then across the street in Lakeside, there are some other utilities that are marked. It looks to be going north to south. Just curious, do you know what's going on with that?
I don't recall anything off the top of my head, but I'll definitely go back and look. There were a few right-of-way permits that have come across recently. Nothing pops in my head of that particular area, but I, I may have just missed it. So, I'll check that when I get back to the office tomorrow, and then I can follow up with you for sure.
I was just curious, I mean, obviously, because, especially when it's coming across our front yards. But they actually did the marking the Thursday before the holidays. So, they've been there for a little while and haven't seen any movement or anybody out there, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
It, it's fall color.
Apparently. You know, I, I just don't wanna, you know, come home one day and have the yard torn up, and I have no idea what's happening.
Not for Mark.
See if he can answer it, though.
Just a comment to, to Chief Smith. I just wanted to acknowledge that I think it's a testament, I think, to our police department that when something happens, the officers that show up here at the meeting for support and just to recognize each other. I think that's a testament to what's going on over there, I think, hopefully. So, I just wanted to let you know that at least I see it, I recognize it, and I, I think it's outstanding that they, that they come, they participate, and they're here, and they, they show up and recognize each other. So, I think that's a, a great image of our police department.
Yep, totally.
And to add to that, I, I've forgotten this in the last few meetings. But, you know, as big of a, of a community as we've become, we're still quite small, especially when it comes to staff. You know, we do a really good job of, of making sure that positions that we have are positions that are needed. And we don't have a whole lot of fat in, in our staff as far as extra positions. Everybody knows that finance had gone through a particular rough time with personnel leaving to go to other jobs and, and getting a new position and stuff. And it was quite a burden on Jennifer and Lexi. They're putting in a lot of hours. And what I had heard, which I, I really appreciate, is that Renee at Public Works, Ada at the police department, offered some of their time to do some of the duties for the finance department, to take some of that burden off of them. And, and so did, um. Megan, thank you. And so did Megan. So, I, I think that's a great testament to the, to the village that we have employees that are willing to, to take some additional duties on that aren't necessarily their jobs, to help when a department, you know, is short-staffed and really needs to help. I'm sure Jennifer appreciated it quite immensely.
Yes, it was very helpful. I can never repay the work that both Ada, Renee, and everyone in the village has chipped in to help support our department. So, it's, it's a great feeling to know that you're part of such a great organization. So, you don't often get that, but that is what makes Montgomery different, so.
Right. All for one, and one for all, right?
Awesome. Let's end on that. All right, future meetings, we, two weeks from tonight, Monday, September 23rd, intergov, and then village board meeting. Would like to entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property for use of the public body. And no action taken after.
Yes.
Who?
Second.
Second?
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yeah.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Admirer, thank you.